All right, I have 6:00 PM. So I'm going to start the meeting. My name is Michael Logan, the Vice President Environmental Services for Compliance Plus Services, which is the environmental engineer and consulting for GATA Recycling Company Incorporated. And this is a public information session for a Passaic County District Solid Waste Management Plan Amendment Application that has been filed by GATA Recycling Company related to their solid waste transfer station and material recovery facility for a proposed daily throughput capacity increase. We've made a public notice of this meeting, public information session, in the papers which appeared on March 24th, in two papers, one in English, one in Spanish, and invited the public to participate and/or attend this session which is being done virtually in accordance with New Jersey DEP requirements. We haven't gotten anyone from the public contact us for entrance into the meeting, but the meeting will remain open until such time as someone wants to join. For the moment, I'm going to go through the presentation here today so we can have this formally into the record. This will also be part of a recorded session under the virtual meeting and will be part of our available to the public on our website that we set up for this application, as well as we will be filing a final report into the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection with our final documentation and information related to this public information session. Since we have no in-person meeting right now, I'm not going to explain where the facilities and lavatories are. So we're going to proceed right into the presentation. I did want to say if anyone has questions, there is a function under the the Zoom meeting to be able to raise your hand. We have a person monitoring the presentation. So if there are any questions that come up, please feel free to ask them. I may ask for some questions to be held off to the end of the presentation. And after we get done, initial go-through, I will have the presentation being represented in a loop so that the information can be reevaluated or re-looked at as we go back throughout the night. Okay, again, this for the GATA Recycling Company Plan Amendment Application. So the GATA Recycling Company, or GATA, is a family-owned company that has been in continuous operations since 1935. GATA currently operates a permitted facility that is a solid waste transfer station slash material recovery facility and a Class A recycling center that is authorized under the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection under a solid waste facility permit, currently TRP 23001. GATA's existing transfer station material recovery facility is currently permitted to accept up to 720 tons per day of solid waste at its facility, which may include up to 300 tons per day of Class A recyclables. All the waste that is received at the facility is placed into its enclosed processing building that operates under negative air pressure, such that all the emissions in the building are directed and drawn to GATA's ventilation system that has four individual air pollution control units on the building. GATA has filed a Plan Amendment Application with Passaic County to request an approval to increase the daily capacity for its transfer station material recovery facility from its current 720 tons per day to a maximum of 1,200 tons per day under the county's district solid waste management plan. While the application has been submitted and conditionally approved by the Passaic County Solid Waste and Recycling Program to proceed forward, the application is currently scheduled to be presented to the county's Solid Waste Advisory Council on May 24th, 2023 for review. It says additionally, following the review by SWAC, the Plan Amendment will also then be presented to the Board of Commissioners that would either be subject to their final approval based on SWAC's judgment of the application to be complete and/or it's going to be supported or not supported in the final decision we made at that time. If the Board of Commissioners will approve to amend the district's solid waste management plan, the revisions will then be sent into the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, where the solid waste planning and licensing group will conduct a final review and approval of the application. Upon successful completion of the Passaic County Plan Amendment process, GATA then still has to go through the necessary applications with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for final approval to revise the current solid waste facility permit and amend its pre-construction air permits to operate in accordance with the new amended daily waste throughput capacity. The reason for tonight's meeting stems from the state of New Jersey's recently issued environmental justice law, EJ Law, to introduce new requirements to evaluate environmental and public health stressors of impacted of certain facilities on overburdened communities. I apologize. The environmental justice, while the regulations were just recently were being developed and had just been recently passed, the Commissioner issued Administrative Order 2125. I'm going to stay on this slide. That provided for means that provided for means for facilities in, subject to the new environmental justice law. I can't stop it. For any facility that had been and could potentially result in adverse impacts to overburdened communities. I can't. To be able to have a community outreach to potentially impact it. Outreach to extend it to opportunity for comments and extended public participation requirements. All these provisions do not necessarily extend to the Plan Amendment process currently. The Passaic County had requested GATA to implement the enhanced public outreach requirements to the community for this application to ensure that there was sufficient opportunity for public comment, public participation related to the transfer station material recovery facility proposed changes to demonstrate that the New Jersey DEP's environmental justice, which for the overburdened community, as demonstrated by the environmental justice website. As part of the expanded public participation process under the Administrative Order 25, GATA published the public notice in two newspapers, again, one in English, one in Spanish, indicating that a 60-day public comment period which began on March 24th, 2023 was open where the community could submit in written comments on the activities proposed in GATA's Plan Amendment application, which is under review by Passaic County. The notice provided a website location where a full copy of the application and relevant information was available for review, including a full copy of the application itself, which is also available at the Passaic County offices for any interested parties to review. The notice also included announcement of this public information session which we're at today to hear information about the proposed Plan Amendment. During the public information session today, it provided with an opportunity to ask questions on the project itself or to provide verbal comments to be included as part of the application record. Questions related to the Plan Amendment or approval process requirements can be directed to Nina Seiden with Passaic County Solid Waste and Recycling Program Coordinator. And written comments regarding the solid waste Plan Amendment application related to the proposed increase in daily throughput capacity can be directed to myself at the address provided here. This address will also be provided at the end of the slideshow and can be obtained off of the website location as we have listed and provided in the public notice in the newspaper. GATA's current transfer station material recovery facility currently operates at 278 West Railway Avenue in Patterson, New Jersey, in Passaic County. GATA also includes and operates a Class A recycling center located directly across from its transfer station material recovery facility at 189 to 195 Genesee Avenue, as pictured in the locations here. Transfer station on West Railway Avenue, the Class A recycling center location. And in addition, there's a scale that's located just across the, from the facility to allow for incoming vehicles to get weighed and also for queuing of trucks to keep vehicles off of county and local roadways. The GATA Transfer Station Material Recovery Facility is located in a mixed-use area in the city of Patterson. To the east of the site are the Norfolk Southern Railroad tracks. To the north are industrial uses and to the west are residential properties. And in addition, there's the Omar Islamic Mosque to the south, along with other mixed residential and commercial properties. As noted in the picture. The privately owned and operated facility has been an integral component of the Passaic County Solid Waste Management Plan since 1984 and is operated at its current location since 1990. GATA's transfer facility, material recovery facility, is currently permitted to receive up to 720 tons per day of solid waste Monday through Saturday. And the application that GATA has applied to the county for inclusion in the solid waste management plan is to increase the daily capacity another 480 tons per day to a maximum of 1,200 tons per day for the facility. Currently, the type of waste that are accepted at the facility include Type 10 municipal waste. These are waste originating from communities consisting of household waste from private residences, commercial waste from retail and service establishments, and institutional waste from schools, hospitals, and public buildings. The facility can also accept Type 13 or bulky waste, which are large items of waste materials such as appliances, furniture, discarded automobiles, trucks, trailers, and large vehicle parts and tires. The facility can handle 13C or construction and demolition waste from materials from building material and rubbleing resulting from construction, remodeling, repair, demolition operations on houses, commercial establishments, pavements, and other such structures. We also handle Type 23 vegetative waste, materials from farms, plant materials from nurseries and greenhouses, and from materials produced from raising of plants. And the waste also includes crop residues and plant stock materials from with that for materials that be waste through a wood chipper from other operations, from Class B operations. Finally, the facility can also accept Type 27 dry industrial waste, which includes waste materials resulting from manufacturing, industrial, and research and development processes and operations which are not hazardous. Since the facility is also a material recovery facility, it accepts Class B recyclable materials, which includes concrete, brick, block, wood, tree parts, tires. We also accept in Class A vegetative, sorry, Class A recyclable materials, which includes glass, corrugated metal, newspaper, office paper, number 2 through 6 polyethylene terping or pack containers, number 2 high-density polyethylene HTP containers and other plastic containers, aluminum, steel, and cans, and plastic film. The recyclable materials are separated from any other solid waste at the material recovery facility and sent off-site to be marketed for inclusion back into the, for end products. GATA is also approved to process up to 300 tons of Class A recyclable materials at the transfer station, which is typically just transferred directly across to GATA's existing Class A recycling center located across the street. GATA's Class A recycling center is authorized with a capacity of 300 tons per day itself, which will remain the same and no changes proposed to that facility. That would include anything that was coming from the GATA Transfer Station Material Recovery Facility, as well as materials that may be delivered from other third parties directly to the site. This facility is equipped with various equipment, including loaders, forklifts, excavators, and processing equipment to be able to sort and separate trash and/or repackage solid waste for shipment off-site. Solid waste and Class A, B recyclable materials are received in the transfer station and tipped and sorted manually using loader equipment and baled if necessary for shipment off-site. As mentioned above, recovered Class A materials are typically reloaded and delivered directly across the street to GATA's Class A recycling center for further sorting and transfer to authorized recycling markets. Solid wastes are routinely reloaded onto solid waste transfer vehicles for delivery to an approved solid waste disposal facility. Waste may also be loaded into intermodal containers for transfer to other non-GATA intermodal container facilities for transportation by rail or other means to an off-site disposal or landfill facility. But GATA has also recently added the ability to bail waste into EnviroBail rail bags, which specialized high tensile strength, environmentally sealed woven polyethylene bags that can be loaded directly into a transfer trailer. Then the rail bags can be sent to GATA's new rail intermodal container facility where they can be loaded onto rail cars for shipment off-site directly to it and facility. GATA is committed to the use of the rail as an option for shipment of solid waste off-site and landfills enhances the use of the facility to more, use more high-efficient means of transportation, saving fossil fuels and reducing greenhouse gas emissions. All waste that are received at GATA's material transfer station material recovery facility is placed within an enclosed process building that operates under a negative air pressure. All the emissions from the building are drawn into a ventilation system, and the process building has four individual air pollution control units that address potential odors and emissions from the processing of the solid waste. Vindicated below a schematic of the two types of air pollution control systems that are located at the facility. In particular, we have two of the units, so there's a redundancy on both sides of the building. So where we have an air pollution control system that utilizes a pre-filtered unit, followed by a carbon filter and particulate filter for an exhaust. There's two of those located on one side of the building. And to the remaining side of the building, the air is taken off into a particulate cartridge filter type unit and also through a exhaust through a carbon filter unit prior to exhausting from the building. And again, those are both redundant systems. Talk just a minute for the new rail intermodal container facility. New Meow Intermodal Container Facility has been added to the GATA. It's located approximately one mile from the existing transfer station material recovery facility. GATA added the ability to package the outgoing waste, solid waste into these pre-engineered EnviroRail rail bags, which are specially designed for providing environmentally sound and secure transportation and handling of the waste shipments. These are then loaded into fully enclosed trucks before going to the rail facility to be loaded into open-top gondola cars where they're finally shipped off-site to a final disposition or disposal facility such as a landfill. GATA has invested in the new infrastructure to provide this support service to the transfer station material recovery facility. Provides availability for long-term alternate waste disposal as facilities have been getting further away for providing cost-effective disposal services to the waste that are generated in North Jersey. And due to the short trip to the intermodal container facility, GATA is able to utilize their facilities and reset the the outbound trailers in a more efficient fashion to ensure that there are less vehicles on the roadway during high-peak periods of traffic. The rail itself is highly efficient means of transport. The railroads reduce the huge economic cost of highway congestions. These are based on Texas Transportation Institute's study of the 2019 Urban Mobility Report. Highway congestion costs Americans $166 billion from waste of time. I apologize for the problems in this presentation. Eight, and actually results in 8.8 billion hours of additional time on roadways, as well as 3.3 billion extra gallons of fuel in 2017. A single freight train can replace several hundred trucks, multiple train, and freeing up space on the highways. And shifting freight from rail also reduces emissions on the highway where there is actually the presence of to build and construct new highways. It's also more efficient, fuel-efficient from the rail ahead of the increased costs. We can actually move per ton of material moved on the railways can move set 480 miles for each gallon of diesel used. In addition, if the the American Railroad Association Analysis of Federal Data finds that if 25% of the truck traffic were moving at least 750 miles by rail instead of by highway, there would be about 13 million tons of greenhouse gas emissions that would be saved, lessened, and less greenhouse gas emissions from fuel and direct costs to the consumer and the environmental. And in addition, there's 50% of the truck movement were at least 750 miles greenhouse gases would then also follow by an increased amount of 26.2 million tons annually. GATA's current pre-construction air permits do allow the facility to operate in Gator's current pre-construction air permits do allow the facility to operate in this enclosed fashion and utilize their air pollution control systems for controlling emissions from the process transfer building. As we indicated, the building is designed to ensure that all the air emissions from the building are directed to the ventilation system and the associated air pollution control equipment. The existing air permits address the potential for emissions based on the current facility's maximum daily capacity of 720 tons per day, based on a six-day week, operating week and 52 weeks per year. Given these figures, the current air emissions from the facility result in 0.63 tons of total particulate emissions, about 0.44 tons of that are are made up of emissions that are less than 10 microns in size are these what we consider somewhat respirable conditions. And then the very small emissions, which are suitable to these particulates are have a 0.31 tons per year based on the emission modeling. The methylene captain is also the main pollutant of potential emissions, which would result in 1.05 tons per year. These emissions are all very low and all meet the risk assessment requirements to ensure that any emissions to the property line or offsite of the facility are below the threshold levels for not requiring any additional controls and or means for reducing emissions further to ensure that there's not an increased risk to the general public. So the plan approval is to allow Gator to increase the daily solid waste throughput capacity of this transfer station of the existing, under the existing solid waste permit. The capacity currently for the solid waste types 10, 13, 13C, 23, 27, from the currently approved rate of 720 tons per day would then be expanded to the 1,200 tons per day of the facility. As we'd indicated before, there's no change in the current Class A recyclable material capacity of the facility that operates just across from the transfer station building. However, we've we've included in with the analysis of traffic impacts for this application, the operation of both facilities simultaneously at its worst case conditions. The increased daily capacity does not require Gator to change any of the facility's operating procedures and or the change anything at the process building. The proposed increase also does not require the installation of any new equipment or controls at the site. Everything is sized appropriately to be able to handle this increased volume. Gator has received a letter of support from the mayor, the town of the city of Passaic for this application, and we've gone over this application with them. Gator previously utilized the services of Smirnoff Engineering Associates who prepared a traffic impact study analysis that was completed in April of 2015 that addressed the proposed in capacity increase up to 1,200 tons per day. The Smirnoff 2015 study assumed an increase in the solid waste capacity from the full amount of which would then was operating at 400 tons per day to 1,200 tons per day. In 2015, the analysis concluded that the proposed expansion of the facility could be developed without any adverse impacts to the surrounding roadway networks on the traffic that would require any amendments of the existing roadways or roadway systems. Since the 2015 impact study was conducted, there have been no significant changes in the surrounding area that would expect to impact the traffic such that a new larger such as new large residential developments, significant increases in population growth or newer planned industrial community, commercial developments. Since the 2015 impact analysis was conducted, there have not also been significant increases in the surrounding area where there's expected an impact on traffic such as these additional facilities. Additionally, the approved traffic routes for the Gator Transfer Station Material Recovery Facility have not changed or are not changing as part of the operations. There's two currently approved routes to access the facility from an incoming side, one from Route 46 and a traffic route assessment from Route 80. There's also one outbound traffic route which takes it to Route 80 currently and also includes in the intermodal container facility, which is right along the same pathway through 80. It's just extended slightly beyond the turn for the for the inbound route outbound ramp to the Route 80 corridor. Both of these factors were concluded in the 2015 assessment and included in with the application that was submitted into the county. To further validate the 2015 analysis and its conclusions, CPS performed an additional updated traffic assessment, which included conducting traffic counts at the primary impacted intersection of the facility at the Genesee and West Railway avenues on March 16, 2022. The traffic assessment performed by CPS also confirmed the findings that the projected traffic data included in the 2015 traffic assessment concurred with the Smirnoff study. CPS also agreed with the previous findings that the Smirnoff of Smirnoff study that the transfer station material recovery facility can be expanded to increase the daily solid waste processing capacity at 1,200 tons per day without any adverse traffic impacts to the surrounding railway roadways. As noted in the CPS traffic assessment, which is completed prior to Gator receiving final approval of the new rail transfer station, the addition of the option to use the rail inner intermodal container facility for outbound waste shipments will allow the transfer station and material recovery facility to stagger its shipment scheduling to further reduce traffic impacts, avoiding peak hours when the shipping to the intermodal container facility. Lastly, the proposed expanded operation capacity will result in a small increase in the facility's particulate and methyl mercaptan emissions. However, these criteria are still considered de minimis and meet the risk assessment requirements for the state's air pollution control regulations. Annual increases will, due to the increase in the waste throughput, put the particular emissions from 0.63 tons per year to a total of 1.05 tons per year and methyl mercaptan are expected to go from 1.0 tons per year to 1.75 tons per year. Again, all the annual emissions will remain below New Jersey's risk screening thresholds where the emissions that were is not considered to be a significant health risk. Gator also plans to combine the two air permits into a single air permit when the new application is going in. It's because there was two permits that were issued because of the construction of a new process building that was completed in 2020. Gator's proposed increase in the daily operating capacity is not expected to result in significant adverse impact to local traffic in the area of the facility and does not require a new change in the existing building or facility operations. In addition, the new daily volume will only result in minimal increases in the site's potential air emissions. During the tropical storm Ida, Gator actually received approval to operate at 1,100 tons per day under an emergency authorization and did so for several weeks without issues or incidents. Overall, these proposed revised operations are not expected to result in any significant adverse effect or increase public environmental stressors, public health stressors to the surrounding community. The city of Passaic issued a letter of support for the operations. So we're proposing to have the application approved by the Board of Commissioners as part of this submission. Just as a reminder, a copy of the Plan Amendment Application as well as the information related to possible environmental and public health stressors associated with the project are provided online at the website location provided below. It's www compliancesplusservices.com/gatorrecycling. Individuals may also review a copy of the application in person by appointment during the hours of 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the office of the County of Passaic located at 90, 930 Verrevue Drive, Suite 250 in Tadaway, New Jersey. Says to schedule an appointment or to ask about questions about the county application review process, please contact Ms. Nina Sidon, Manager, Solid Waste and Recycling Programs, that are at the phone number 973-305-5738 or email location at nina s@passaiccounty.org. Again, written comments regarding the solid waste management plan amendment application related to the proposed increase in the daily recycling capacity should be sent to myself as a tactical consultant for Gator at Compliance Plus Services, Inc., 240 Gibraltar Road, Suite 100, Horsham, Pennsylvania, 19044. Or you can also provide, reach me at mlogan@complianceplesservices.com. Thank you for your listening and I apologize for the glitches in the presentation. At this time, is any of the individuals that are on right now have any questions? Yeah.
I do not, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Michael, actually I did have one comment. You might just want to make a correction to the record. I think you said the city Passaic where Gator is located.
Right. This should be the city of Patterson, not not the city of Passaic. I apologize.
No worries, just for the record.
Thank you, Wayne. Getting a little flustered with the handling of the slides.
I understand it well.
I'm not sure why the presentations go like this sometimes.
It's Murphy's Law.
Yes. There's no questions at this time. What I'll do is, Michelle, do you have anything or direction to provide? Assuming that. I'm going to let the slideshow continue to loop for the moment and we're going to monitor it to see if anybody comes on from the public or if anyone has any questions in the interim. They feel free to ask me. We'll go through anything that's provided in the application or any other part of the next part of the process that we need to review and try to proceed in that direction. If someone should come on, I will announce it so that we can kind of go through the presentation again and or allow them to get a full, you know, run through of the information that was provided. So I'll put you guys on hold for the moment. So I'll put you guys on hold for the moment.
Sorry, we haven't gotten anyone else. Contact us to join the meeting as of yet. I'm going to change the slide show over to just the contact information. So if anybody has any questions, they'll have that information readily available if they log on or come in. And again, we can start up again with the presentation if we need to for the for any public individuals that want to join the meeting. Any other questions? Well, let me...
Thank you, Michael.
Yep.
Hello everyone. Appreciate everyone's staying on if you're still out there. We haven't gotten anyone that has decided to join the meeting. I am going to start officially ending the meeting now. Again, if there's any other questions or information I need to provide, please let me know. I will have a copy of the presentation available on the website for the public and everybody's general consumption tomorrow. And we will get together the videotaping of the public meeting and put together a final report for this in accordance with the 25 requirements shortly and get that out to all individually as well as posting that on our website as well. So the information will be there and available for the public. And if we get any additional comments or questions or concerns, we'll certainly let everybody know and we'll finalize up and file our final report by the 24th of May. Does anyone have anything to add before we close out the meeting tonight? Okay, then again, I thank you for your time and consideration and patience with some of the technical issues that happened. We finally tracked everything down as to what was going on, so kind of corrected. And I will leave out. Thank you very much again.